At seven o'clock, I'll call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order. Ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple people signed up. Robert Thompson, you wish to address council?
Yes, sir. For our podium. Thank you, sir. Members of the council, I do think on the agenda tonight is one of the issues of potpourri and incense that stores are selling here in town. I don't think any of us are dummies. I think we know what people actually do with these products. The products are helpful to people. If you look at the history of the product, the first product, cannabahexalol, was patented by Pfizer Pharmaceuticals in 1979. The other banned chemicals that you have that are already banned, the HU-2 tans and the HU, the federal government is the patent holder of those particular chemicals that are out there. At the same time, it is in a cannabinoid family. It is a product that was medically produced originally for medical use to relieve pain. The way that it was supposed to be originally used was to be used in nebulizers and inhalers for people to receive medical relief, very similar to the drug that's out there called Marinol, which is being prescribed by doctors with patients that would have cancer or AIDS or anorexic woman or man that has appetite. At the same time, these products do help people. They maintain control. If you take away the product, the only thing that will really happen is you're going to open the door for marijuana to come back in because the people that would use those products are going to go back to using the marijuana, which leads a child or a person to a drug dealer's house. And once they go to a drug dealer's house, they now are exposed to maybe methamphetamines or somebody that's making bath salts or somebody that's selling oxycotins. I'm a man who's had four heart attacks, two open-heart surgeries, several broken bones. I can't even go to a doctor in this town and get a prescription for regular pain medication because everybody else is abusing it and abusing the system. And if there's no way that somebody can get relief because everything is overregulated, then what is one to do? We have to go and break the law and go to a drug dealer's house and buy marijuana or go to a doctor that's maybe crooked and find the pills and relief that one would need? I think by banning this product would be hurtful to the city because the man will take his business and move it someplace else and then people will drive to that place and they'll be spending their money there. When people come to our city and they buy the product, you never know. They may stop over here at the convenience store and buy a Coke and fill up their gas tank at the same time. We're trying to increase businesses here in town at the same time by being safe. By taking away a business, you're also taking away the other traffic that would be coming into the area for, you know, not everybody's going to go in there and get just one thing. I understand, you know, you say the potpourri and the incense. Well, if you're going to ban that, well, then it needs to be banned across the board. That means Walmart needs to pull their incense and potpourri. That means Family Dollar needs to pull their incense and potpourri because what's to say that somebody's not buying a stick of incense, scraping it off and using that? Potpourri and incense are words. What may be inside the material is another thing. But if you're going to ban potpourri and you're going to ban incense, it needs to apply to all the stores in town that would sell bags of potpourri or incense sticks or anything like that. So if you're going to hurt one business, it needs to go across the board. So if you're going to say you can no longer buy potpourri or incense, well, then it needs to apply to every store in town that sells incense and potpourri because they all contain some kind of chemical in one shape or form. And I would ask that the city council maybe look at this as a different way and step back and put off this decision and find a way to maybe regulate it a little more. Not every store in town should be selling it. If you go ahead and give a green light for it, that means mom and pop, Dave Cook, whoever could start selling, you know, the same products. You should be able to control that by the business that does sell it has to have the necessary license, like a paraphernalia license through the state of West Virginia or through the city, but not just a tobacco license or a liquor license or a license like that. You know, people do use the product. They do get relief. It's not the boogeyman that everybody thinks. What the boogeyman was is the bath salts, the methamphetamines. It's pretty sad when I can't even go into Walmart or I do go into Walmart and I see nothing but rows of people standing there buying Sudafed to go home and make some methamphetamine to put in their bodies or whatever. There's the product that needs to be regulated and more controlled is the bath salts that are being made and the methamphetamines that are being made and the prescription pills that are going around. None of this potpourri leads to anything else. The only thing it will do is lead it to somebody else to go to somebody else's house to get it and then they're going to get offered something else, just like they say marijuana's a gateway drug. Marijuana does not take you to and say, okay, I smoked some marijuana, now I want to go get some heroin. It doesn't work like that. The way that the gateway drug is, is you go have to get it from a drug dealer. You go to his house, more than likely the drug dealer has other products to offer you. By banning this and not controlling it or regulating, I think that you're going to open the door to when the kids or whoever go looking for the product, they're going to be going to other places that are not going to be as safe as a man that sells it and IDs the people that are buying the product. Instead, it will be going underground. It's so simple to make that anybody that knows how to use a cellphone or a computer can go right on there right now and type in a few words and have Mr. UPS man deliver it at my house tomorrow. So it's not going to stop it. It's going to just push it underground. So would you rather keep the money, the revenue and the taxes here in the city or would you rather just have people going on the internet or go and driving someplace else and spending their money? You've got to look at it as a business, but there's also a way that it can be cooperated with and controlled and regulated. And that's what I ask that you guys look into and consider, that you need to take a step back and really look at what these products are, the chemical structures. Most of them are chemical structured as analgesics, as painkillers. And people get relief when they use it. Yes, it's labeled not for human consumption, but everybody in this room knows what people are going to do with it. So if you're going to ban potpourri and incense, then it has to be a ban citywide. That means Dollar General needs to pull their incense out. You need to have Walmart pull their potpourri off the shelf because like I said, who's going to stop somebody from going and getting that potpourri? Potpourri and incense is potpourri and incense across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. John Burrows?
I'm John Burrows. I'm a couple of my mom and pops hit the shop. I understand, you know, the people wanting to ban potpourri here and now, okay? I will not and have not ever sold anything that's going to stay law. Everything I sell does follow the state regulations, all right? I can't stop you from making your decision. You're going to make whatever decision you think is best for you, okay? And I understand that, all right? I do not sell underage. Myself, the people who work for me, my fiancee, we check IDs at two different points under three different security cameras. If there's any question about the ID that we don't think it's a real ID, we turn it away. I've worked as a bartender. I've worked as a doorman. I've worked as a bouncer. I know how to check IDs. If there's the least little thing that is incorrect, if it's outdated, if it expired yesterday, they get turned away today. I'm not trying to do anything illegal. I'm trying to follow the law. I'm trying to make a living. I can't make big law speeches. That's not me. I just wanted everybody to know who I am, what I'm doing, and then I'm not trying to break their laws. If you decide to ban it within the time period you give me, I'll be out of that business. It'll probably fold my business, but I'll be out of that business because no amount of money is worth me being in trouble for. No amount of money is worth my fiancee being in trouble for or anybody that's helping me over there that works for me. I just wanted to fair shake and find out what's going on. We wrote about this in the newspaper. We never even knew it was in front of the board until we seen it in the newspaper.
What's the name of your business again?
Mom and Pop's Hit the Shop, west right across the street, sir.
That's right across the street from here.
Okay. We started the business a year ago in October.
We honestly would like to invite any of you to come in our shop and check it out. It's got so much.
We sell a lot more than just potpourri. I mean, we sell leather jackets. We sell all kinds of clothing and jewelry.
It's a wonderful shop.
It's not just about one thing.
No, it definitely is not.
And we don't have the prices jacked up on anything, you know? It's just.
That's one product.
Like I said, just want to come over and see what was going on with this one product.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to our department reports. Michael Dawes, city administrator.
Thank you, Mary. You should have in front of you the financial report, revenue expense report, pending December 31st, 2012. General fund revenues at this point are $1,814,574.59. Excuse me. Expenditures are $1,676,108.45, which is a positive net difference of $138,466.14. Revenues over expenditures, as always, if you all would like a detailed report on the revenues and expenditures, just let me know after the meeting. I'll be happy to provide that to you. A couple items of news and note under old business. We did have a building commission meeting earlier this evening before the council meeting. Just an update on the West Virginia Army National Guard and Conference Center. The city, all required materials for the city, for the USDA Community Facilities Direct Loan Program have been submitted. The final component for us was the meeting tonight gathering the minutes for that from the building commission. The only thing that we're waiting for is a bond council statement from Steptoe and Johnson to complete the application. I'm hoping to have that attained in the next week or so so we can get that finalized. We've been also working with the city attorney, Dave McCullough, and legal counsel for the National Guard to draft a leasehold agreement, which would be between the city of Buchanan, its building commission, city council, and the West Virginia Army National Guard. They've sent us a draft prior to Christmas. We've been looking at that draft and have made several changes. Once we get that ironed out, we'll be submitting another draft back to the guard. It's not important right now for the application, but we'll need to be secure prior to closing of the one. Hurricane Storm Sandy update, the fee for reimbursement for Hurricane Sandy has been submitted. It was in the amount of $7,371.54. Buchanan's comprehensive plan component update, we did have a meeting a week or so ago with Mike Doherty from WVU Extension. Mike did submit a proposal to the city of Buchanan on behalf of WVU Extension. Council did vote to support the proposal when we had our special meeting a few weeks ago. The mayor has signed that proposal. The total cost for that will be $2,700. This will complete the three studies in relation to the transportation, housing, and land use, which are necessary to finalize our City of Buchanan Comprehensive Plan. I'll be starting work on that in the next couple of weeks and that'll transcend a class that Mr. Doherty has at WVU this semester and there'll be some work over the summer by Mr. Doherty and his fall class will actually complete that. So we should have a document with those three studies finalized by the end of the calendar year. Health insurance renewal, I'm still waiting for information from Bill Hamilton, who's the city's insurance representative with Blue Cross and Blue Shield regarding various health care, health insurance coverage options for our employees, health insurance renewal. Once I receive that information, I will notify council so options can be considered prior to our 2013, 2014 budget approval and our insurance renewal period. Mr. Hamilton is looking at several options for us, seeing what Highmark, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield can do as far as our HRAs and playing with our deductibles. And certainly you all should be familiar with that in the meetings and discussions we've had really over a year, year and a half since I've been involved in this. Once I get that information, I will quickly pass that on to you because we'll have to start making some decisions with that if we want to go that direction. And under new business, I will be presenting our mid-year general fund financial report at our next council meeting. We'll be comparing this current fiscal year to last fiscal year. And also next week, I will be distributing the 2013, 2014 budget packets to our general fund departments for their review and input. Tis the season for that. Seems like we just wrapped that up. The general fund department budgets are due back to me in my office by the end of January. At that point, after that, we'll be holding finance committee meetings for the 2013, 14 department budget requisitions sometime in early February. Once a date and time has been determined, I will be advising council and the committee of that date and time in February, but look for that roughly the first week or so of February. I know it seems like we just did this, but we're back to it. So unless, and if anyone wants to be involved in that process early on, please contact me. Love to have you. Any questions for me? I'll have another item later on in the agenda in regards to Resolution 2013 dash one.
Any questions for Michael? Chief, how's your voice?
I'll make it, okay? I go to work for Barry White this weekend, so I gotta get out of here. All of our, as we ended the year, all of our annual testing that's required to be done was completed, all of our hose, pump, safety inspections. We just finished up before the new year flow test and all of our SCBA's, they all passed. Everything that we're required to have tested throughout the year was accomplished. We had some problem with some of our air pack testing equipment and we had to send a machine off. Hope we got the bugs worked out of that. So all of our equipment inspections and checks were done. I went in November, I missed this meeting, I went to the fire commission meeting, there was a representative there from the ISO and they're making some much-needed changes in the ISO rate scheme that they used to rate cities and fire departments. So probably in about July, those will probably go into effect. That doesn't mean we get rated, we're not due to have an inspection yet, but we're making some changes for the benefit, maybe kind of help us out a little bit. It used to be with your water divergence when they came in and looked at your water. They go out and flow hydrants. Now they're not going to do that anymore. Our water department here probably does a skid or chop thing, water department in the state of flow testing and maintaining, taking care of hydrants. As long as they have those annual and semi-annual records of flow test, ISO will take those so we won't have to take the time and guys and vampire go out and physically flow fire hydrants. Another big change that is pre-planning and public safety and education was never part of an ISO rating, no matter how much that you did. They finally began to see the light. They finally understand that probably fire prevention is a big key to their businesses, us putting out fires. So now we're going to get for doing building inspections and pre-planning, we actually get bonus points. That's not part of our, we can't, let's say if we get six points, we can't use that to make up for a low score, but we can get, use those as bonus points. They haven't told us how many points that is, they wouldn't divulge that, but so that's something we're going, you know, something that's being changed as well. The fire department, volunteer fire departments buying a new vehicle, buying a new personnel carrier, kind of a form of squad truck that's going to be versatile, we use CarEx, structure fires, taller vampire and some of our equipment there. Our needs are changing, so we're going to move in that direction. When you had one that needed to be replaced, we decided to replace with a little more, something that's a little more versatile, makes it a little more efficient. We're having a meeting and I don't hope it must still be Dave's son, but next Tuesday, city attorney myself, I believe Michael, and probably the mayor sitting down have a discussion on the residence requirements for firefighters, about a couple drafts from other cities if what they use. If you, when we kicked around that idea of requiring paid firefighters to within a certain radius and we kind of thought we had that, but we don't really officially have anything. So hopefully we can get that taken care of. And unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have for the evening. Thank you.
No questions, we want to do your voice a favor, save your little fire. Jay, oh, city engineer?
All right, I'll try to move quickly through some of these, but some of the projects that kind of stagnated over the winter have started to pick up some speed. Update on Gateway East, from city hall to the college. The sidewalk project is still at the top. I talked with the project manager today. It is a go. We have been approved to purchase the 43-period lights at, so that we would avoid a $6,000 price increase next week. We were able to push that through even though the project wasn't officially given the green light during the last week of Christmas. I worked the phones and tried to say, look, we shouldn't have to pay $6,000 for the same lights just because the project hasn't been approved. They concurred and they gave us the approval to move on that, anticipating the start of that project in April because, that kind of leads me into my next point, SHPO, State Historical Preservation Society Office, would like for us to look at two WPA sections of sidewalks, 300-foot total. One of them's in very bad shape, disrepair, but they would like for us to evaluate alternatives of modifications to the under梁that avoid, minimize, or mitigate the adverse effects on the historical properties, i.e. the sidewalks in question. They don't want us to fix the broken sidewalks in these two areas. So talking with the project manager again today, we're probably going to take those sections of the sidewalk out. Then that way there's no holdups over, you know, destroying the historical sidewalks and move on with the project and address it at a later time. That's Gateway East. Army National Guard project, good news right before Christmas, we received the green light from the Bureau for Public Health. The project was a go. We anticipate purchasing the materials. Michael and I are going to work this out sometime within the next two months. Again, they are due for their quarterly price increase. Even if we have to purchase one or two months ahead of time, 12-inch pipe is not cheap. It went from 21 to 27 just in the last six months while I last reported and anticipate even more price increases. So want to buy those big bulk materials while we can to avoid the price increase. I began working on the NPDS permit today, hope to submit it mid to late February to the DEP to get the official approval to turn to dirt. Right prior to Christmas, right before Christmas, I completed the preliminary engineering report for the USDA, which Michael talked about earlier at the building commission. They needed some information. It happened to be contained in the information that I gave to the Bureau for Public Health, plus some additional items. Submitted that to them and so I don't believe anything will hold that portion of the grant application up. Am I correct, Michael? Everything else has been submitted. So that portion of the USDA application has been buttoned up. Nothing new to report on Island Avenue, other than I hope to begin working on it sometime in mid-February to resume working in that water line replacement. I do have some news update, I think it's pretty good, on McDonald's Route 20 lane widening. Talked with that project manager today. He's hoping to have his engineering report submitted to his department by the end of February. They're going to go with a modified alternate number one. And for the people that don't know what that is, we're going to put a storage lane between West Vic, I mean Victoria Street and College Avenue, which is in front of McDonald's and the Academy School. We're going to make that a three-lane area through there because right now if you're turning left or right out of McDonald's, there's no place to go. You're hoping that somebody will let you out and, you know, you don't get hit. Well, we're going to put a storage lane to the left and a storage lane to the right. The current road configuration as it is now is 42 feet wide with two 14-foot lanes and sidewalks abutting them. They're going to a seven-and-a-half-foot sidewalk on the school side, 12-foot lane, 14-foot storage lane, another 12-foot lane, and another seven-and-a-half-foot sidewalk on the McDonald's side, which will put the sidewalk right up against their retaining wall. Still within all the DOH right of way, you know, even though the sidewalks and the fences and guardrails were put, you know, in place, those will be relocated because it's on DOH property, but they're going to try to alleviate some of that congestion there. Cost for that project is now in excess of $700,000 and the DOH, you know, concurred to me that, inferred to me, sorry, that they're still looking for the May 28 construction start. So that's where we are on that. Public safety complex, work continues now that the safe routes to school project was finished up in late fall, early winter. The street department has moved over to the public safety complex and I want to report on some of the nice work that they're doing. 90% of the wiring has been completed, probably about 80% of the drywall has been installed at this time. Insulation's been installed, probably about 75% of the rough plumbing is installed. As I reported to you the last time, three COC subcontractors have been retained. The fire alarm subcontractor, Small Ridge Electric, has already been there, done their rough wiring, and they won't be back until the other two subcontractors, which is the HVAC and the fire sprinkler, are finished with their work and then our guys complete some other small items like installing the ceiling grids. Davis Heating and Cooling, which is the HVAC contractor, and Pass Fire Protection will be there January 14th to begin their work and they anticipate anywhere between three and six weeks timeframe to complete that portion of the project. And that will get us, you know, a good bit ahead, you know, into what we need to start looking at and Michael may touch on that as far as budgeting for the next phase of the public safety complex, but work is progressing. Finally, Gateway West. I reported on Gateway East, which is from city hall to college. Gateway West will be from Route 20 intersection where the bank and Rite Aid Pharmacy is. A new sidewalk and lighting project out to Liggett Edition. You know, for the people that's, has never had to walk that route from Liggett Edition to Buchanan, there is no sidewalk. You know, they are walking at the edge of the pavement. The miles, the speed limit out through there is 40 miles an hour. It's not the safest of conditions. So the city of Buchanan, we're applying for an application to do what we did at Gateway East out at Gateway West with a five-foot sidewalk and period lighting. It's going to be on both the north and south of the old Weston Road. The north sidewalk will go from just past Kelly Motors all the way to Liggett Edition intersection. It will go across the railroad tracks under the overpass and tie into that to give a continuous, it's almost 3,000-foot-long section of sidewalk. The south portion of the sidewalk will stop, will go from CBS Pharmacy on the opposite side of Kelly's, past the hospital and to Erie Insurance, which is just across from Kids Are Kids. I met with the DOH's this morning, the field supervisor and district engineer, to discuss some drainage issues and some concerns about the speeds. They are going to do a speed and traffic study for us to hopefully recommend slowing that speed limit down from 40, 35 and 40 down to 25 with the pedestrians that will be using this sidewalk. We want to address some drainage on both sides of the road. I'm scheduled to meet with Rite Aways and Permitting over in Weston next week to discuss some requirements that they require for this application. Contacted A&amp;O Railroad today and set up a meeting with them next week because right now, you know, we can only, I can only get within 30 foot, 30 feet of the track on either side. I can take my sidewalk up to within 30 feet, but right now there's nothing for the pedestrians. I can take my sidewalk up to within 30 feet, but right now there's nothing for the pedestrians to walk across the track. There's not a level walking surface. They actually have to walk out into the travel lane of the cars, the vehicles, to make their way around the dip in the railroad tracks. Well, they've got some items that we can install in there, and I've got a meeting with the general manager of A&amp;O, you know, Buchanan District next week to discuss what we can do there and make that a level surface through there so that's not to force the pedestrians out into the lane of traffic. That project will be conducted unfortunately in two phases. We applied for $300,000. Concrete prices increased quite significantly over the last quarter. Project's now worth of $400,000, so we've got to divide the project into two phases. We're going to do the north side first to at least get the people from Liggett Edition down through there, and then the south side, hopefully with next year's funding cycle. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but that's all I have.
I have a couple.
Question for Jay.
Oh, questions.
Okay. The Gateway East project?
Yes.
Is it going to start at the college and work its way here, or start here and work its way to the college?
Probably going to start at the college and work its way this way. We're going to work on the opposite side of City Hall, you know, the Stalker Youth Center side because there is no sidewalks. One of the stipulations of both Gateway East and Gateway West is you must confine, provide a continuous walking path from point of beginning to point of end. Right now, if we went to the north side, we'd tear up the only existing sidewalk. So we're going to construct a new sidewalk on the south side, finish it up, and then tear up the north side, or this side, and start at the, start at the college and work this way.
Is there a projected finish date on?
We, we, they're going to give us a one-time extension. As I explained before, the project is due to be completed June 21st. Even though they still haven't give us the notice of proceed, they're still holding this to the June 21st date, but they will give us one six-month extension, even though it's-
Are you talking both sides to be finished?
Yes.
Okay. And does that mean we have the monies in place that it will be completed?
Yes, the monies are in place. We will contribute, you know, the 20% match, but now we've got to eat some concrete prices because when this was budgeted out and we applied for it, it was 92 to 95, and now it's 120 to 125.
That's for Gateway East.
That's for Gateway East.
Okay, and one other question. The old light poles, are those coming down?
That is in discussion. I haven't heard back from Mon Power, but we are assuming that they are going to come down. You know, at least the heads will come down. The utility poles are not going to be removed, they're not going to be relocated. You know, I really wish that we could, you know, try to start a campaign or talk to some people to see if they would consider it, because if they move the light poles to the back, it would just really clean up that entire project. But, but right now, there's no money.
So where will the, the new ones actually?
The new light poles will be to the back of the sidewalk. You know, the new light poles that we're installing will be to the back of the sidewalk, but the existing wooden utility pole with the power and the cable and the tail of the TV, that they'll stay in the front. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I have two questions. On the, the WPA sidewalks?
Yes.
You're saying they're not going to be, anything will be done with them, period? Or we're going to look at doing some-
We'll look at alternatives after the project is completed, but so as not to hold up, you know, and that's, and speaking with, with the project manager today, you know, SHPO is still wanting us to look at, you know, is there any way that we can mitigate this or alleviate the damage to these 250-foot sections? And the one is just beyond disrepair, it's just broken. I showed Michael, you know, they're cracked, they're busted, they're, they're holding water now ice, you know, and it's freezing, and they want us to somehow mitigate that.
How do they reconcile between the ADA and the-
Yeah, exactly. You know, and we've argued that point, and we've argued, okay, we're going to hold up this $200,000 project for 300 feet of sidewalk, we'll just take it out. And that's where, and when I came on board and finished the detailed drawings, that's the way it originally was, when we were leaving those two sections out, but they've seen what the, the street department has done on the safe routes to school and saved the emblems-
Right.
And they approved that.
Yeah.
But then all of a sudden they've reversed track, and now, now they don't want to approve that, so, you know, do we reverse track, just go back and take those two sections out and proceed as we were going to last February?
Is there any way, any way we can put pressure on them to do the same thing we did with the Gateway School?
You mean the safe routes to school?
Yes.
They do not like that alternative. SHPO does not like what we've done.
Even though, even though they approved it earlier.
Well, I don't know if that was SHPO or if that was the DOH engineering section, but SHPO does not like saving the, the placards, the, the concrete sections, the stamped sections, you know, and, and setting them in the, the new concrete sidewalks.
The second question is on the Gateway West. Would city can't act independently in regard to the speed limit once the sidewalks are completed?
No, that's state DOH right of way. The work is going to be completely within their right of way, so we have to abide by their rules and regulations.
Because that seems ridiculous to have a 40 mile an hour-
Oh yeah, I walked it, you know, and, you know, when you're walking up, when it's raining and it's snowing and there's puddles of water gathered there, so you're forced to walk even closer to the edge of the road, you know, it, it puts a new perspective on it, you know, and, and they weren't slowing down. And those guys got a gist of it today, and they say, you're not kidding, they weren't slowing down. I said, no, they're not. So I'm hoping they do the speed and traffic counts, and, and they can justify lowering that down. The field manager seems to think that that probably would be doable, but again, they've got to run the, the studies.
Anything else for Jay? Thank you, Jay.
I'll try to be a little quicker.
You do well. Rich Clemens, opening house.
Just a couple of items. I noted earlier meeting that the airport authority was in the process of coming up with a new extension of their master plan, and will hold an open house for the public on January 16th, which is a Wednesday evening, from 6:30 to 8:30. There won't be a formal presentation, it's just open for guests anytime in that timeframe. The open house will be held on the second floor of CJ Maggie's. We'll have copies of the plan, posters of the project, and anticipate, you know, it's open to the public, anybody would like to come up, look at it, comment on what the proposals are, it's part of the process. So that's Wednesday, January 16th. Also note that on the various city boards, there's a couple of openings, three or four openings across various boards. If folks are interested in serving on one of the boards, give us a call at City Golem, we'll explain what's available and might be interested. That's all I have.
Question for Rick. David Colley, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of my thunder's been stolen, as Mr. Doss reported, I reviewed the West Virginia University Extension and Service Agreement at his request, a couple of proposals for modifications to that, but it's pretty well ready to go. The proposed lease agreement from the state of West Virginia, I probably made 100 little typo kinds of things and suggestions for that. Mr. Doss, after we iron out a couple of remaining details, we'll be forwarding that on to the USDA and back to the state to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. I anticipate that cooperation to be forthcoming. The first responder meeting that Chief Tacy mentioned will actually be on Monday, January 14, at 11 o'clock here, and that will include Chiefs Tacy and Gregory, Mr. Doss, myself, and Mayor, if you'd like to attend, you're certainly welcome. I hadn't actually sent that out to you yet. Making some progress on the electrical ordinance, may have something as early as the next meeting. The main thing that I'm going to report about tonight was the follow-up on the council's discussion with bath salts at the last city council meeting. I have a memo, if you indulge me for about five minutes, I'll run through this as quickly as I can. This memo is to members of council, Michael Doss, city treasurer, police chief Matt Gregory, from me today, bath salts. This memo supplements the discussion commenced during the December 20, 2012 council meeting addressing concerns with the sale of bath salts in our corporate limits. As our city continues to consider measures designed to deter the distribution and hence use of such products that either are already on the controlled substance lists of the state and/or federal governments, or which are on the cusp of being identified as such products, I have assembled some materials that I encourage all council members to acquaint themselves with in order to have more informed discussions in the weeks ahead. I am attaching in this memo two statutory excerpts from the West Virginia Code and nine internet articles, several of which are specifically pertinent to bath salt issues in West Virginia for your review. Please find attached the following. First, Chapter 60A dash 2 dash 201D 32. This is a new statutory enactment that was effectuated in April of 2011 by the state legislature, which is a sample of the many revisions made to our state code by the state legislature to the Uniform Controlled Substances Act and which statutes were effectuated in April of 2011. Subsection 32 captioned Synthetic Cannabinoids is a new subsection with a host of specific chemical compounds that were made controlled substances in 2011. Two, Chapter 47, Article 19, Section 1 et sec of the West Virginia Code, captioned Drug Paraphernalia, requiring among other things the procurement of a special license issued through the state tax commissioner. This article requires among other things affidavits by any applicant for each and every employee authorized to sell such items that such person has never been convicted of a drug-related offense. This article further defines the specific paraphernalia and requires that, quote, "Every licensee must keep a record of every item, effect, paraphernalia, accessory, or thing which is, which is designed or marketed for use with controlled substances, which is sold, and this record shall be open to the inspection of any police officer at any time during the hours of business. Such records shall contain the name and address of the purchaser, the name and quantity of the product, the date and time of the sale, and the licensee or agent of the licensee's signature. Such records shall be retained for not less than two years. It is a felony offense to sell drug paraphernalia to a minor. Failure to maintain the necessary logs is a misdemeanor offense, with the punishment being a fine of not less than $10 nor more than $500." Three, the number, November 5, 2012 Pittsburgh Post-Gazette article captioned "To Plead Guilty in West Virginia Bath Salts Case," detailing the convictions of the various hot stuff and cool innings participants in Buchanan and Clarksburg. Four, the May 7, 2011 Charleston Gazette article captioned "Bath Salts Ban, But Drug Abuse Remains," explaining the new state legislation and the issues presented with chemical manipulation of prescribed, that is forbidden, compounds. Five, the September 18, 2012 Huffington Post article captioned "Mark Thompson Who Allegedly Raped and Killed Goat While High on Bath Salts Pleads Mental Illness," describing the grisly acts of a 20-year-old man from Canawha County who was high on bath salts. This article further observes that from January 2011 through September 2012, the West Virginia Poison Control Center in Charleston received 171 calls regarding bath salts, most of these calls coming from healthcare professionals requiring assistance in treating individuals who had ingested the drugs. Six, the June 7, 2012 Fox News article captioned "What Are Bath Salts and Why Do They Make People Go Crazy?" That again recites the macabre actions of another Charleston man who cut a victim's face and then attempted to stitch up the wounds. This article also references the Miami Zombie Case and recites that bath salts first surfaced in 2008 in Europe and Asia before finding their way to the United States. Number seven, the August 19, 2012 Global Grind article detailing the hospitalization of eight persons in Charleston, West Virginia during a two-day span from drug-salt ingestion. Eight, the April 29, 2012 Parkersburg News and Sentinel article captioned "Reports on Bath Salts on the Rise," end of quote, describing the increase in bath salt incidents during the year following the April 2011 statewide ban. Number 11, the Bath Salts article taken from the United Summit Center website detailing the nicknames, manners of ingestion, dangers, and usage statistics for Clarksburg, West Virginia. According to this article, United Summit Center averages 20 crisis phone calls and two to four commitments per week for bath salts. Number 10, an article more appearing to be an informational spreadsheet taken from the drugsforum.com depicting state-by-state the legislation that has been proposed or passed to address this national crisis. And 11, the July 19, 2012 press release from then-West Virginia Attorney General Darrell McGraw, captioned, quote, "Attorney General McGraw Blocks Distributor Sales of Bath Salts in West Virginia," in which the attorney general states, quote, "Laboratories that manufacture chemicals like so-called bath salts, incense, spice, and spot remover continually alter their compounds to stay legal and evade authorities." This press release further describes the state's efforts to deal with bath salts via civil law enforcement action to block the supply of dangerous compounds from distributors. While our city officials continue to study this problem, I suggest several measures prior to council considering any ordinances aimed at further deterring, deterring the sale and purchase of bath salts. First, I recommend that our city promptly contact our state and federal representatives to lobby them for sterner legislation respecting the sale and distribution of bath salts. Second, we should work through the West Virginia Municipal League to collaborate with our sister cities to heighten awareness of this major societal problem and to determine best policeman methods, including but not limited to possible ordinance adoptions. Third, Buchanan should commit itself to abatement of bath salts through enforcement of statutes that are already on the books, such as those set forth pursuant to 47-191 of our state code. Fourth, our Buchanan Police Department should be encouraged and supported to collaborate with all other county, state, and federal drug enforcement agencies. And fifth, our city could intensify its involvement with and support for such agencies as FRN and Ucare that provide educational programs and literature to make our community more aware of the toll that is being taken from bath salts usage. Hope this memorandum helps everyone to better understand the crisis our society, and more specifically our Buchanan community is currently confronting with bath salts. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact me. That's the update on bath salts for tonight. I don't know if the city council needs to take any actions on this. I think this is a matter that will continue to generate a lot of attention, not only in Buchanan, but there's all kinds of discussions. The state legislature will be taking this up in their fast approaching new session, and Congress continues to look at this matter. Maybe we'll get off the fiscal cliff issue for a while and talk about some of those things in Washington. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
David, it's very informational, and it's, it's, what we really set out to do was to study this issue and see what the real issues were and what we might do. And so thank you for your, your input. Any questions for David?
David, do you have any, any commentary or response to what Mr. Barrows and Mr. Thompson had to say today?
Well, when we started this discussion at the last council meeting, there was no particular business in Buchanan that was targeted for this discussion. We're talking about a, a crisis that has been identified at all levels of our society, nationally, statewide. I mean, I could have read the whole Darrell McGraw press release, it's about three pages long, that talks about the difficulties that his office had experienced 14 months after the vastest revisions to our Narcotics Controlled Substances Act in 20 years had occurred. The problem with the use of these materials continued to rise during that period. So, you know, it's, it's not about a particular business. It's about, it's about this, these products and these various compounds that continue to besiege particularly the young people in our community. As for, and it's, I'm not taking any umbrage with either one of the guests that spoke tonight, but there could be a lot of activities that I would certainly describe or agitate as unwholesome, which Buchanan could, if we wanted to, we could become the porn center of, of the mid Appalachian region and feature places like what they have down in Dunbar and St. Albans as you drive in that stretch beyond Charleston. We could lobby to try to have gambling of all sorts in the Buchanan River on a barge. There are lots of things that generate traffic and that would generate people staying in restaurants and motels. So the mere fact that, that some of those things may occur as a result of bath salts being sold within our corporate limits, I don't find that particularly enticing to turn the blind eye or the deaf ear. You asked for my commentary. I'm a, I'm a grandfather, I have five children, I have three grandchildren, I've got two new grandchildren on the way, and most of them live here in this community. This isn't about me, but this is about a lot of other people that have voiced the same concerns that we've been discussing here for the past several weeks.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. I am a worker for them as well. My name is Desiree McKinnon.
My name is Desiree McKinnon. Have they or nor have they ever sold bath salts, I will vouch for that. That I do know for myself.
We understand that there's, there's, uh-
A difference.
I think all of us have tried to, to educate ourselves a little bit more on this and-
I can understand a lot of-
And some, excuse me, somebody said that, uh, I guess it's this gentleman here that, Rich put, looked away, and I don't remember names very well, but, uh, that anything's just a name. We can call anything, anything. But it's, um, so, so I understand, I, we're not, we, we didn't mean to be taking you off the task, so don't take us to task. We're, we're studying this, and, um, I think that we have a pretty good track record here trying to be fair. And, uh, so we, uh, we're going to study this, and hopefully we'll come up with a solution that's, uh, that's palatable for everyone.
Could I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Yeah.
That the, uh, the information that David provided us this evening, the different articles, David, that we may want to have those available for some people that want to take a look at it also. For example, the guests here tonight would be-
Certainly.
-to be able to get a hook of access to that.
I would suggest that we consider the packet being sent to Bill Hamilton. Uh, he's, he's probably more aware of this stuff than we are.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At least in documents and-
I've had some conversations with Bill.
Sure.
And, uh, so, uh-
And we're not making any decisions.
No, no, we're, we're seeking information. We're, we're trying to educate ourselves in order to make a decision. Yes, Mayor?
Uh, my name is Christina Hall, and I'm John Rose's niece, and I also go in there and shop. Um, I understand you guys are going to look into it. Um, I heard that there was a couple of states that actually legalized the pro- uh, the potpourri, not the bath salts, but the potpourri. Um, I was just wondering if you guys, when you guys looked into all this, if you guys would look into that as well.
Okay. I mean, we, we're certainly, and, and understand, we're not, as, as the council pointed out here, uh, we're not targeting anybody. It's not the only, we've had lots of, I've had lots of people tap me on the shoulder about this, I'm sure some other council members have, and we, we're going to study this. One, one more comment, and then we're going to move on.
Education is what's your insurgent. My name is Jessica Brandon, and I'm a child of this community all of my life, and hard, fast education for the subject at hand. Bath salt is the same as your methamphetamine problem that you have in this town.
Yeah.
The potpourri that you keep, or the, you know, is being sold currently in this town is more of your stoners that are around this town, so the differences in the two should be a slight education to you as to what you're looking at. You know what I mean? It's not the same type of people, and I hate to say it that way, but being a child of this community and knowing what's going on in this town now, yesterday, and 20 years ago, I think I can speak for plenty of people when I say that I would rather have that store there than to have all the drug dealers and the methamphetamine dealers in this town run rampant or go back to that if they had switched to potpourri instead. And like I've sat and listened to through this whole meeting, you know, your revenue is not that great, and the city needs a lot of work and a lot of attention. You know, if they are bringing in, like you said, income, if you bring in business, any that can, but this one is, and that's the point.
Well, and there are a lot of other businesses doing the same thing.
Correct, correct. Very correct.
We're, we're going to move on here now.
I just want to say, I'm totally ignorant as far as this subject's concerned. Looking forward to the, the information you've provided, David, and doing some other kind of research also. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask us to continue for one more meeting, this, uh, items D1 and 2. We're doing some investigation into this matter, and, um, uh, we should have some, some kind of a resolution for this come, uh, next meeting. So, a motion to table D1 and 2 until the meeting of December 17th.
January 17th.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, thank you. Consent agenda is approval of mandatory regular meeting on December 20th, approval of willing and wearing permits, and payment of bills. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
Motion made, second. And second. All in favor, signify so, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. Resolution 2013-01, general fund budget resolution. Michael?
Yes, yeah, in front of you, Mayor and Council, Resolution 2013-1. This is our second budget resolution of the year, fiscal year. First, as you recall, was on July 1st when we, we closed out our books and wrapped everything up. Um, a couple of items to note as you look at this for consideration. Most of those increases, uh, specifically in the police department lines, were basically revenue that was, or expenditures that were expended in lieu of some grant money and some drug seizure money. That's just putting that money back in there to, to correct those lines, um, for those monies that come in after the expenditure's been made. Um, the street department, we did receive money back from our USDA, uh, grant for Farmers Market as well as our River Walk Trail. Those projects were actually completed during the last fiscal year, but we just got the money in this fiscal year because they were so tight to be completed, uh, in the transition of fiscal years. And one thing I, I do want to note, this is a brief statement, is, um, you'll notice that the business and occupation tax, uh, showing an increase of $15,000, and more specifically, that $15,000, uh, is a pretty big portion of the revenue that we've collected this year just in our BNO contractors' tax. And, and I know our commitment, council's commitment to this when, when, when implementing this was to, uh, make sure to earmark that money for street improvement projects and capital projects. I want to draw your attention to that on the, uh, on the second page of, or actually the last page of that document. Well, you'll notice that we have increased the street department capital outlay and street paving an additional $7,500 apiece for that. That's additional streets, sidewalks that we will be able to do, uh, during this fiscal year. So we're, we're continuing our commitment, uh, the application of those monies for that, going specifically for those infrastructure projects that are street-related and capital-related. With that, entertain any questions and make a recommendation for council to approve Resolution 2012, not 2013, New Year.
13-1, right? Right, so, um, Resolution 2013-01, motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Will require a roll call vote, Rick.
Uh, Rich Clemens? Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else, Michael?
Uh, no.
Comments and announcements? Uh, would say to you that Scott Preston and Ron Pugh both had previously told us they could not be here to see with other commitments? David?
I guess the only comment I would make is in regard to your BNO taxes, Michael. I still think that from a philosophical standpoint, I think we should have a comprehensive BNO tax and not exclude certain, uh, segments of our business community. That's all.
Pam?
I have no comments.
What comes, John?
I think our guests tonight for intelligently, respectfully presenting a viewpoint about this, and I think it's very helpful as we learn to try to understand it, also encourages us to, um, maybe employ some use of, uh, college students who have spent a bit of time researching this and the health and wellness team and a few other groups at the college that actually research this stuff quite a bit.
Okay.
Good idea.
Rich?
No comments.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks.
One more, one more comment?
Where can we get copies of that report?
You can take mine now, and I'll get one later. How's that?
You got copies.
There's several, huh?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I would like to say that if you are interested in speaking with college students, I am a college student, um, in nursing. I'm going from RN in nursing and have done a ton of research on the subject, so I would be more than glad to help.
What was your name?
Leslie Stumpf.
Okay. Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you.